And now that I've said that, I'll put myself on mute because everyone else seems to be.
Hi, Leela. Thanks for saying hi. Appreciate it.
Well, here I go. I'm muting.
I'm gonna do a share so we can have the agenda in front of us. And we might as well get started. You good to start, Joyce?
We don't have Chris on yet, do we?
Yeah, I just saw him.
Okay, then I'm fine.
Yep, there he is. Okay, calling the meeting to order at 6:30. Sure. Thanks, everyone, for coming. The first or the second order business approved the minutes from the September 8th and September 9th meetings. I would take a motion on that.
So moved.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
No, I'm good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I would like to make a motion to move the cell tower, which is 7H, up to just to be the next item so that we can have Attorney Rose Mark just give us an update so he doesn't have to stay for the entire meeting if he doesn't want to.
Second that.
Any discussion? All righty.
Hi, Jean. How are you?
Hi, Dan.
Hi, I'm just dialing in for this meeting. I wasn't able to get to a point where I could. I'm still at another client's office, so I'm, I'll have to just dial in for this one if that's okay.
Absolutely. So just looking out for a quick wrap up. We had talked to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 that's quite, that's quite all right. I couldn't see you, so I didn't, and I'm having a little bit of audio delay, so I apologize if I interrupted you. I just wanted to just thank you for having me on this evening. I think Dan Casa Grande was also going to attend, but he's at a an appellate hearing, I think, right now this evening. So I know he was, he wanted to try to make this meeting as well. Again, just mostly just to update the board where we are with the status and kind of the next steps. So if there's no questions specifically, I'll just give you a quick summary of where we are. If that's okay.
Yep.
Yeah, all right. So we wrapped up the public hearing aspect and the evidentiary aspect of the, the meeting with the Siting Council late last month. Right now, we're preparing the draft findings of fact that was requested by the Siting Council that basically lays out from the town's perspective, the evidence that was put forth by the direct testimony of the witnesses and also the prepared testimony that was submitted. So that would include testimony that was used and brought up through cross-examination of the PDA's RF engineering witness from Isotope, David Maxon, and all of the other witnesses, as well as cross-examination of the witnesses for the applicant and the direct testimony of the witnesses that were submitted by the town of Kent. I'm about, I would say fifty to fifty-five percent of the way through with the drafting. Planning to have that back for a, for Dan and I to review later this week with the expectation of submitting that into the board. Would like to try to do it no later than Monday, if the board wants to review those findings. And then we would be submitting them in on the 22nd.
Okay. Chris, Ed, do you all have any questions?
No, it sounds like it's proceeding pretty normally, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't have any question.
Okay. So Dan and Dan and I will be in touch as they head towards the, you know, the final draft of those, the findings of fact, and we'll continue to
Yeah.
Go forward. Yeah. All right. Thanks, Dan.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
Bye bye.
Public communication. We, we didn't have any that came in prior to the agenda coming out. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay, I'm gonna assume no. Tax refunds. I'm gonna share the screen again. I just need to find it. So these are the tax refunds. Oh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine tax refunds that we have submitted by the tax collector that I would entertain a motion on. I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Great. And I'm not sure if Barbara may be in transit for the treasure report, so we may have to, I'm just looking here. Yeah. Let's, we'll come back to that. She just left here maybe ten, fifteen minutes ago. The, so we go under new business to the Houstonic River Commission. So I had a conversation with Steve Robey. Was that Steve two weeks ago, I want to say?
Yes.
Something like that. And it was a great conversation. I did not, I'm gonna admit that I didn't know that there was a separate Houstonic River Commission, and Steve spent a good amount of time one afternoon and really sort of gave me the lay of the land and how the commission sort of intersects in with all of the other organizations and the that are there to help us protect the, the river. So I didn't know if, you know, I don't know what the board knows of the Houstonic River Commission, so Jesse and Steve, by all means, I would love for you all to have this time as sort of a platform. I know that you have a meeting at 7:30 or I think you have a meeting at 7:30, and so I don't want to keep you up, keep you too long. But you're obviously an important sort of piece in this, the whole river thing that has been, you know, on fire all summer, and I really, I hopefully, I know the HVA has been working on a lot of different projects and ways to help with the river access and education, and I'm hoping that we can all, like, use the winter to get this, come to a better solution so that folks have access to all of this wonderful resource and recreation and still keep the town safe and, and have people have access. So I'll stop talking so that you all can sort of give us your, your spin on what you all have been working on in the last, you know, year or so. And no, no, you know, the bar is, there's no bar. I'm just, I'm just wanting to share your information out to the board and out to the public because I know that there are folks who don't know about your commission.
So, Steve, yeah. Sure. So the River Commission is working on a number of projects, obviously related to the river. And, and the reason primarily that I called to talk to Jean was about river access. And a few years ago, the town started to reduce river access. And then last summer, of course, with everything else that happened with, especially with the state closing all of the parks and whatnot, that put a lot of stress on the river. And the Houstonic River Commission works basically from the Massachusetts border all the way down to New Milford. And more and more towns started to close off access to the river, which just sort of funneled an excessive number of people to places where it wasn't safe for them to use the river. And also, like at Bull's Bridge, became a real conflict between the people who were trying to keep the river nice and those people who wanted to use it and in conflict is certainly not what we're looking for in terms of river usage. So what the River Commission asked was that we talk to our, our respective towns and just find out where the select, the select people want to go with river access and try to come up with some different solutions to the, the challenges that access presents without just closing it off to everybody and taking that away from both the people in town and visitors to town. We feel like the river is something that we want to share and brings people to Kent, quite frankly. And it's for people who live in town is, is one of the reasons that they love Kent. So some of these trying to protect the river while at the same time provide access is certainly sometimes in conflict. And, and our hope was that working with the, the different governments of the towns, we can come up with some solutions to address those challenges.
One, one question I had that Steve kind of addresses, just kind of the curiosity within the town of Kent. How much of the closings are COVID-related as opposed to drowning and public safety? Obviously, there's a lot of dialogue about, you know, what happened at the situation in North Kent Road and then River Road being just around heavy usage. But kind of wondering, you know, there's, there's a spot along Scotticook Road, a little pullout there that's now got some kind of blockades there that are new this summer. Obviously, Bull's Bridge, that's, that's, you know, not town-controlled. But I was just curious what your, what also the, how much is, is the selector of the town saying, hey, we gotta, we gotta maintain, we got, there's a dangerous spot, we gotta access it. I'm just curious.
So I think the remarkable increased levels of usage were certainly a byproduct of, of the pandemic. The specifically, the Scotticook Road piece where you, where that pull-off is, where we've, there's been, we put materials and there's new, no parking signs. That was because when National Parks and not first light closed both those sides of the, the river, it caused sort of like when you squeeze the water balloon. So it caused people to, they're very willing to park up Scotticook Road and walk back down. And so we were trying to mitigate that, prevent that overflow to just continue because they have literally from Bear Mountain in New York State up to, I think it's the, the Massachusetts-New Hampshire border for the AT. They have one law enforcement ranger, and so she's, you know, obviously the one-armed paper hanger, and she, they did reassign her to spend at least one weekend day or half a weekend day each weekend when National Parks closed that area down. And, you know, we were definitely just trying to do the best that we could with the limited, extremely limited resources we have for law enforcement, for just keeping people moving, sharing the information out because most, most people who are coming from other parts of Connecticut or New York State, New York City, the Five Boroughs, where HVA has identified many folks who come to recreate in Kent are coming from. They're not, they're not visiting the Kent website or Facebook page for their information. They're, so it's, it's a, you know, one of the big barriers is how do we get the information to the right people so that we can educate them? And the, so the closure on the National Park side was, you know, there was a lot of, because of the high use, there was all that devastation to the, the vegetation and everything. So if we were able to share, you know, educate the, the right subset of the population that's using it, that would be huge. It's just, how do you identify and not filter out, but how do you target the, the people who are the users? And that's definitely one of the big question marks that's out there to, to solve, and hopefully we can do that over the winter.
Jesse, I, I, I think to, to your specific question, I, I believe that COVID certainly exacerbated the challenges we face on the river, but the challenges have been happening for a long time. I think there's an economic component that goes on where people from really city, city places are seeking destinations for weekends that are not expensive, and the state parks have been overrun. If you look at the river, it seems to me, it appears to me that Kent is the first place that you can really have an abundant amount of access to the river. New Milford does not have as much. It has River Road, but once you get beyond that, you get down to very tight quarters and you have the power plants and you have the commercial entity. So Kent is actually the first stepping ground for access to a river that is technically not recreational to the degree that you have some fly fishing, you have some boating up north in Cornwall, and you have some class five waters beyond, below the bridge, Bull's Bridge. But I think the challenge is, and I've asked this question before, is what are we all going to do? The town, the state, the feds, and HVA and the other bodies that, that cover the river. Are we actually going to try to make this a recreational river? And if we are going to do so, how to deal with it so that it's done properly, safely, and, and that's, that the river is not overrun? And I, we don't have an answer tonight, but that's something that if you guys can come back and at least weigh in somewhat, I think for a later day, that, that's something we can, we can help people figure out how to use a river if, if indeed we choose to do so.
Connie just asked, how does wild and scenic factor in? By all means, Connie, if you're able to come off mute and join the conversation, that would be fantastic. Oh, no audio. Okay.
I mean, I can kind of address, you know, the wild and scenic designation as, as, as we've pursued it with the state designation without federal recognition. It doesn't come with funding for supporting projects, like maybe something like this, an education thing, but I don't, and if the HVA, I don't, I think they've come and talked to their Rio program.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you guys have heard from, okay, I just wanted to kind of double check because when we talk about the information, that, that sounds like, I mean, from what we, they've reported back and the things that I've heard, and you've even had a former student of mine that actually was one of the interns a summer ago, you know, sounds like a kind of the best that we can kind of hope for, at least in terms of a low-cost, active group that's really trying to get out there. But similarly, they're stretched pretty thin. It's, you know, it's
Right.
It's a couple people cruising down from Massachusetts, you know, down to New Milford.
Yeah.
And, you know, they can pop in and they'll, they might talk to everybody that's there when they're there, but the next person that comes two hours later, no idea. And that pile, I mean, they, they pulled a lot of garbage
Yeah.
the last couple of years. So, you know, really grateful for their, for their efforts.
And I agree, Jesse. I do think that, that Rio program, and I, I cannot remember what the Rio acronym stands for. It's gonna make me crazy.
It's, it's
River
Information and Outreach.
There we go. So I think that if we can somehow figure out how to increase the, those numbers for those Rio folks, because what they're doing, the fact that they're collecting all that data, they've, you know, they're mapping all that data, seeing the Rio presentation was incredible. And, you know, it leads to, and this is something Connie and I talked about last week, the, the social justice issue, that's, that's part of this entire thing. You know, the, the federal lands are all open to all of the public, all of the citizens of the United States, and and we need to be, you know, not only, so there's that, but we need to be an inclusive community and welcome anybody who wants to come and recreate in our town. And that, that social justice piece is really, really important.
Well, I, I would agree with you, Jean. I think the, the challenge that I, I find is that this town has never established a recreating concept because we've never been faced with it before. So if you, if you want to go down and actually look at it, we own North Kent Road, but we do not own the river. We own River Road, but we do not own the access to the river. That is all federal land. So it gets really ugly and
Yeah, sticky.
and blurry and with no federal funds to say, okay, we're going to establish down on River Road a put-in or a beach or a recreation place. There's no manner in which the town of Kent can police that.
Right.
So what we are locked, what we're left with is a bunch of people leaving garbage, you know, wittingly or unwittingly, but, but doing such that, that somebody has to clean it up. And then you have groups like Steve and Jesse's that don't have the funds and the wherewithal to be able to A, monitor it or B, clean it up. HVA having a stretch of river themselves and dealing with policies, it's, it's just, it's a mess. So I think, in my way of thinking, we should really start to have initiatives put forward to us to say, how do we make this happen? I don't think that's coming out of Park and Recreation in Kent, honestly. And it's not going to come from a subcommittee at the selectmen's level. I think it's got to come from HVA. It's got to come from the, the, from, from the conservation group perspective so that we, we don't have every bit of river completely overrun with people, any people, local or not local, because I don't think that's good for the health of the river. So I don't know how we initiate that, but as a selectman, I would love to hear going forward how to plan for next spring, next summer, for people who are not just going to be fly fishing or boating, but people are just going to come and put their toes in the water and splash around and have a cookout.
Right. So I left a voicemail for Lindsay at the HVA last late Friday afternoon, and hopefully we'll have, you know, will, there will be some sorts, I know the HVA is very interested. I know you all are very interested. I know Connie is very interested in sort of having some coalition move this forward, and I, I think that that's the most likely way that we're going to be able to make some sense of this, parse it out, and then, and then come back with some, you know, some sense. Yeah, and the, and Connie just put in the, in the chat, Kent Land Trust and Conservation. Yeah, so all those, it's a very wide coalition of groups and will move forward and get with HVA and you all. So maybe if you want to take the message out to HRC tonight, that, you know, we're, we're hopeful that we can all come together and, and make something, you know, start to make, make some progress on, on how to, what it's gonna look like in the spring. When the
I would, I would encourage that to happen sooner than later, in that, as always and inevitably, it comes down to money.
Yep.
And we have a budget cycle that's going to come up, and if indeed there's something whereby the town taxpayers have to consider some sort of funding process, it would be good to have that prior to sort of April or April process so that good to have that prior to sort of April, our April process, so that we don't slip into next July and have another challenge on our hands with no funds to, to implement anything. And it, it may not be necessary, but that's something to consider.
I mean, just to be clear, we, the town is already supporting the Rio program through the Husatonic River Commission. We, we, we helped pay for those interns. And I do think that it's an important step in the right direction to have those guys out there. They are stretched thin, but we were able to, or HVA hired one or two more interns this year than the previous year. And I think having kids out there, interacting with the people who are using it, and trying to just get them to, to think differently about the river, respecting the river, appreciating the river, it's a step in the right direction. It's, it's not a solution. And the garbage isn't going to disappear, but they have found that by being out there, there's less garbage. That's, that's been the feedback that they've given to us. And then when they see a big problem, then they do call for help from the state police, or, I mean, it'd be nice if Deep had another person on the river a little more often, like they used to. But again, that goes back to them cutting back at the state level as well, for sure.
And the whole sort of backlog of, with their seasonal workers because of COVID, they pulled all of them off what their usual missions would be, and they were all doing park, like, they were, that was part of the reason why Kent Falls couldn't open, because they were filling the roles of just park workers for Macedonia Park. And they, there just weren't the NCON officers to, you know, the one that they would want for this area. They were pulling, all over the state, they were pulling them back, back into the parks. So I think COVID this year was an anomaly of strange staffing and, and, you know, all the stuff that COVID has caused.
So just to share, the one thing I've been wondering about is how much, so you're saying that the, it wasn't so much the parks were closed because of COVID, but the combination of, of trying to mitigate, mitigate the risk and part with groups, that seems certainly with, with, with Kent Falls. That's, that was my assumption all along. But then also staffing and staffing, having to
Yeah, it started off as a shutdown because of COVID, because, and that was way back in, whenever that was, end of March, I want to say. But then what happened was the, the normal number of seasonal workers that would be coming into their system were not, was not happening because of COVID. So the numbers were lower. And then with Kent Falls State Park, they didn't, at the time, you know, you're not going to hire park workers for a closed park. So that the staffing level sort of organically got lowered. And then when the desire was to open back up in, I don't know, we were pushing them every week pretty much, but I want to say May, June, we met with the commissioner. She actually came out to Kent Falls State Park. It was the first time she had ever been there. So that was kind of a, a special moment to get her out there in the middle of all of this. But the conversation was that there, the park Macedonia didn't have any more workers, or the, the Deep Park system didn't have any more seasonal workers. And all those seasonal workers at that point in the summer, they're, they're done, they're off moving on to something else if they haven't gotten hired, or, you know, and because of COVID, there was so much just sort of upheaval, upheaval and not knowing what was going to be happening. So then it, it sort of morphed into a staffing issue where they, they actually have nine, nine park workers there every weekend to work at the park. That's how many it takes to keep the park open and safe over, over at Kent Falls. So when Macedonia Brook closed for the season, at the end of the camping season, they morphed over to Kent Falls, and that was what sort of the tipping point that enabled Kent Falls to open back up.
Oh, my only question to Steve and to Jess, and maybe to Connie as well, is, I'm not clear, as just a individual here in town, to what degree the, the various different entities that, that are involved in the river are interested or desirous of having access to the river by the public, and in what manner is it, is, you know, is it to be, to be implemented? So take for an example, from the, up in Cornwall, between the two bridges, it has been clearly established that the state of Connecticut stocks fish for fly fishermen, period. That's what it does. It also allows for boating from Cornwall all the way down to, and they float down to the state park entry, right, right at, at St. Bridget's there. There seems to me that there's nothing north of that that's planned, or south of that that's planned. And yet, we clearly have a, a challenge in front of us where people are coming and pushing that agenda. And again, I just state, I don't think it's coming out of Park and Recreation in Kent, nor out of the Board of Selectmen Subcommittee. How and what, what and why, or ever are we going to establish something when we have so many entities that have an interest in the river, both to keep it as, as pristine as it is right now, or as, as much so, and interest to use it for recreational purposes or day tripping? And the way, my way of thinking is, we need some help as to shaping something that might be beneficial to the, most importantly, beneficial to the river, but also as an economic component for the town, because it draws people. And I don't know whether that is working with the feds and getting a, a dirt bicycle trail from here all the way up to Cornwall Bridge, or what it is. But, you know, that's the kind of thought process I think that, that I would like to see come to us, and then figure out how we do it.
And
My only question is, over 20 years ago, we discussed a lot of this with the settlement money from the PCBs. And there actually, Chris, there was a plan at North Kent done. Bart Clark was working on it. There was a, they were proposing a footbridge to go over the river.
Yeah.
A boat launch to be put in that area cleared for a beach area. Also, down at Bull's Bridge, there was actually a boat launch proposed out on the point, which the fire department was involved with, with a few other people saying that's a terrible spot to put a boat launch, because we were worried about people putting a boat in that weren't used to using a boat and going right over the two dams. And luckily, they pulled that back and never established that. We discussed garbage back then, about putting dumpsters there on weekends for people that would use the area. And then the whole thing just dried up and went away. And I think the state decided not to use the funds there, which were part of the settlement money. And where the settlement money went, I don't know. But at one time, there was a whole plan done for that whole North Kent area. So maybe we should look back into looking at that, what that plan was, if people are interested in it. But I think it just, it was going to become a huge resource for future use from people who was going to be in charge of it. Because like you're saying, there were so many groups involved, the Appalachian Trail people were also had rights, the scenic rights, if you was off the Appalachian Trail, that you would have to adhere to. And what would happen with the garbage, the road conditions, lifeguard situations? So it's been discussed for an awful long time, but nothing was ever done about it. So that's where we need to decide where we're
I'm, I'm familiar with that, those, Ed, and, and thanks for, for bringing them up. What I'm, what I'm really hitting on is, I, I see it, I see a push-me-pull-you situation here. Because if we went and, and, and really did a program such that we utilize this river, I think it would not be in concert with the group that Steve and Jesse and Connie are involved in as much as, and, and maybe I'm guessing here, but I just think the, as much as we build, it will be intensely used. And I don't know if that is the, where we want to go. And maybe some small version of it, or, or simpler version of it, but I'm, I'm willing to listen to it.
Right. There has to be a balance. It can't be just open. I think there has to be a balance, because the use would be so high that you don't want to destroy the resource.
Right. But it's been, it's been the privilege of the few who've been able to use it, myself included, on wonderful walks where no one else was around. And I don't know how, you know, how fair that is, if you will.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, just with the law, I, I just typed in, you know, that's what you're describing, Chris, is a lot of what the Wild and Scenic Plan is intentional to do, as soon as, hoping when the, when the federal, the National Park Service is able to move forward on, it's been a kind of the, it's been in a holding pattern for, how long has it been, Steve? Eighteen months, two years?
I think that's an underestimation.
Okay.
Being kind.
Sounds like Ed's, way back when Ed was talking.
Pretty much, pretty much.
I mean, it's not that long, but it, it's definitely gone all the way up there, and it's sitting in some pile somewhere. And, and the people who are supposed to work on it, those job, those, 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 those are job vacancies right now.
Yep.
So nobody's doing anything with it.
Well, maybe we can get a louder voice by bringing all these groups together and seeing what we can do. And we have, you know, all the conversations that we've had with the National Park Service folks over at Bull's Bridge, maybe, I mean, knowing Kurt Spears and who I think is the acting chief ranger, I mean, maybe, maybe there's some, those relationships, we can find some new, new forward motion. But I'll keep reaching out to Lindsay and we'll, you know, hopefully sooner than later, definitely before the end of the year, we can start zooming with all these groups and see what we can come up with.
Have you checked in with the Northwest Conservation District at all? Because I know Karen Nelson and Cynthia Robinowitz were very involved with the, the scenic and wild. At one point in time, they did come in and give a presentation on that. So that might be another organization that you might want to tap into. Cynthia might be very resourceful as well.
Okay. Awesome. All right. Well, thanks, Steve. Thanks, Jesse, for coming in. I know you guys are probably just going to hop off this and hop onto the HRC. I appreciate you coming on, and we'll definitely be in touch to make this move forward.
Well, thank you. Thank you for letting us come to your meeting tonight.
Thanks, guys.
So next on the agenda is the KVFD Boat MOU. I don't really have any report for this. I made, Randy wrote, wrote up a draft for us. I sent it over to Carly, who's on the Zoom call. I made a couple of edits. We made a couple of edits going back and forth. It still needs to go to the department. And then we'll, we'll wait to hear from, back from the department. I need to hear back from Randy on some of the edits. And then the draft, I guess, should go to the fire department, unless the board wants to see a draft before it goes to the fire department. It's a chicken and egg kind of thing.
What does MOU stand for?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you. And what is the, what is the understanding, the memorandum of understanding supposed to be with respect to?
The, the town, so Bruce, in 2018 and 2019, he applied for two grants through Firstlight and got a total of $30,900. We were awarded all those dollars for the purpose of the fire department purchasing a boat. And they have gone through their process. They voted on the boat that they're going to purchase. But we're just looking to put an MOU in place similar to the MOU that is in place for the Gator from so many years ago, that just as a memorandum, like a cooperation agreement, just to say, yep, the fire department is going to be given these town funds that have been gotten through grant, and the town is going, and the fire department is going to purchase the boat. And the expectation is that if, if Rick, if Public Works needed to go deal with a Beaver, Big Beaver Lodge on one of the lakes, or somewhere on the river, or down at the Brook at Park and Rec, well, you wouldn't put a boat in there, but somewhere where you would put a boat, the town doesn't own a boat, so that the boat would be available for the town to have use of it. But obviously, the primary purpose of the boat is for their emergency response on the different waterways. Was that, would that wrap it up accurately? Carly, Ed?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, that's the general idea of it. It's very simplistic. It's more simplistic than the one for the Gator was.
So if that's okay, does that make sense for you, Chris, and Ed, for us to get it out to the fire department?
Sure.
And then they can take a look at it and do their process. Okay. Next is KVFD tax abatement. Ed, you're up.
Oh, I thought somebody was saying, somebody else was saying something.
Donna was
I missed it.
I just brought this up previously before that I'd asked if the selectman would consider the tax abatement that was approved by the state of Connecticut General Assembly. Would you like me to read the letter? Or would you like Carly to read the letter that was received by the selectman's office?
Ed, you could read it.
Okay.
Submitted.
Dear selectman, this is from the president, Carly Rockevansky, to Gene Speck, Chris Garrity, and Edward L. Mattson. Dear selectman, in 2019, the state of Connecticut General Assembly passed file number 791, House Bill number 5125, allowing municipalities to increase the tax abatement given to first responders. The bill states such tax relief may provide either I or A, for the period commencing July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2021, an abatement of up to $1,500. It's currently 1,000 in property taxes due for any fiscal year. And B, on and after July 1st, 2021, an abatement of up to $2,000 in property taxes due for any fiscal year. Or two, an exemption applicable to the assessment value of real and personal property up to an amount equal to the quoten of $1 million divided by the mill rate in effect at the time of assessment, expressed as a whole number of dollars per $1,000 of assessed value. I feel that Kent's selfless volunteers deserve the increase and hope that the current tax payment could be increased and be put into effect as quickly as possible. Please consider this request and place this topic on your agenda for deliberation. Respectfully, Carly Rockevansky, President.
I would like to add that that's only in part, that the bill, I didn't type out the whole bill.
Right.
That was only part of it. So there is more to the bill.
All right. What would you like to do?
Well, I would make, I can't, I don't think I should be making the motion, but I would accept, ask maybe Chris or you to make the motion to accept this letter, and consider going to follow this General Assembly file number 791, House Bill number 5125.
So the, can I hold you up before you make an actual motion?
Yeah, I'm not making the motion. That's why I said I wasn't.
Okay. So we should, when we talk about it, we should talk about it as a public act, because it's, when it's a bill, it hasn't been passed yet. So it would have, it would be Public Act 19-36. I just want, I don't want it to be confused in the minutes anywhere. I just want, I don't want it to be confused in the minutes anywhere. And so, looking at the ordinances and I hate to to put Darlene on the spot. What would be the vehicle to change that? Because it's an ordinance, right, that is currently on the books for Kent? So what's the process or the vehicle for getting that change? Because I think that's where we would need to go rather than.
You're, Jean, you're correct. Naturally, because it's part of the ordinance, that would have to go to a town meeting and being voted on by the townspeople.
And so even though, I'm trying to remember, the fire department updated their that SOP. Was it two years ago? Did that go to town meeting? Did that go for?
I think the SOP is because of the way it's written into the ordinance, they have the authority to change the SOP. I would definitely have to check tomorrow about the wording, but I think the SOP is written into the ordinance.
Yeah, so that was the good part of, hang on one second, when I went and looked at it earlier, I was definitely the good thing about it. There is part of the ordinance that specifies that it's up to $1,000. So part of it does refer out to the SOP, but then another part doesn't. So I don't know from a procedural standpoint where that leaves us if the fire department can change their SOP and then and then, because it says as amended from time to time. Sorry, let me just find this.
I would probably get a clarification because naturally this change is a the obvious, it's financial. If something like that, I'm not sure that that was the intent of the SOP being able to change itself. I think that was to change how many points to, for them to qualify or the guidelines on which the fire department utilize to recognize members or veterans or auxiliary members. I don't believe it was to give them the authority to change the amounts of the abatement. And I would err on the side that that would be, again, because it's financial, something that would definitely have to be brought forward to a town meeting.
Okay, so we can follow up with.
And there have been other towns that have already done this, so.
So what, what's the actual financial impact? Because, you know, all the, all the blah, blah, blah stuff about the ordinance. What's it mean per individual that will help me as a basic common taxpayer understand what I'm doing?
I can get your firmer numbers, the exact numbers. I just wanted the recommendation of the board at this point.
A baseline of $1,000 to a baseline of $1,500 through June 30th, 2021.
And what, where are we now? What's the baseline now? A thousand? And what's the rationale? What is the, what is the, what is the state government's rationale for this movement?
Well, because in 2019, in the General Assembly, somebody thought it was important, maybe it was time to raise the amounts.
Is that because taxes have gone up?
What the General Assembly recommended.
Well, I, I appreciate that, Ed. I, there are lots of things in the General Assembly, I would imagine, I don't want to follow, but my question is, is this, was this out of the fact that taxes have increased? And therefore adjustments need to be made? Or is it just, is it, what is it, what is the genesis of this? Does anybody have an idea?
It's to try to bring younger people and more people into town that will volunteer to work on the ambulance or in the fire department side, fireside, to spend more time for the benefit. Because you do have to spend a lot of time to get this benefit. This benefit isn't an easy benefit to get by just signing your name and coming to one meeting.
No, I, I understand that. I know, I know the fire department has points, as Darlene was saying, and, and time in and things like that. Mike, so my question to, to the fire department members on, on this meeting is, has this abatement actually motivated people to, or kept them in the fold?
Yes, it has.
And so more money will do the same people or more people?
Now, hopefully it'll bring a lot more people in.
All right, so what do we have to act on?
So I, I don't think we can act on anything. We need to find out from Randy whether or not it has to go to a town meeting, to a town vote. Which it sounds like it probably does. But does it make sense, Ed, for the fire department to start working on updating the language in the SOP so that they're?
I will ask, would, I will call Down Hall and Woodbury tomorrow and find out, because they passed it. And I will find out what exactly they had to do. I don't think as far as the SOP goes, the SOP was never written as to, to change the dollar amount. Like Darlene said, it was just to, to amend for if we were gonna change the point systems and how that works. So all we would have to do, but we can't do anything. We can't change our SOP until we know if this passes or not for the dollar amount. Because if it doesn't, how can we change an SOP if it hasn't passed? Because really, the SOP is for the membership, not for the town.
Sure, I was just.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep, I was just thinking that it might make sense for the department to prepare that language.
Well, we can have that prepared. That's fine. But there's no use in, I mean, it's not like we can vote on something that isn't there yet.
And just, just a point of clarification, are you both recipients of this?
I don't remember if I was this year or not. In the past years, I've declined it.
That, that, that said, I, I, I think I would be inclined to let the, the general public decide this rather than the three of us.
Oh, that's perfect. No, I, I just brought it up for the recommendation from the board to present it to the town.
Okay, thank you.
Which is perfectly fine with me.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Food truck ordinance, Donna.
Yeah, um, at last Thursday night's meeting, I had this on the agenda for planning and zoning. To talk about how I do not believe that the food truck, that the use of food trucks, the installation of food trucks, however you want to consider it, is something that should be under the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, the Land Use Office. And it was gonna be my recommendation that I ask that the selectmen prepare an ordinance. The commission was not in favor of asking for the selectmen to create an ordinance. But they do believe that the land use office should not be regulating food trucks. And so they have decided that all questions regarding the food trucks will be referred to the selectman's office for the selectman's office to handle going forward. When you think about it, the food truck is not something that's placed permanently on the ground. It's not a structure. It's a temporary use. It's part of the peddlers. It's part of the hawker license. Most towns allow food trucks via a town ordinance. I know Randy has written quite an extensive one for the town of New Milford. So we probably won't be getting any questions for food trucks now that it's getting a little bit cooler. But starting probably in April, March, you're gonna see them, the calls are gonna start coming in. And the commission believes that they should all be referred to the selectmen, and the selectmen can figure out how they want to handle it.
Donna, is there any regulations within the presence zoning regulations that speaks to the food trucks or not?
No, our regulations are written that if something is not listed, it's excluded and therefore not allowed. And that has always been the interpretation. That's why Chris at the food truck and the seafood truck, the hot dog truck and the food truck, the seafood truck, they're allowed to remain where they are, but if they move, the commission had made the determination that since they had been there since before the regulations were written, that they would be grandfathered in. But if they wanted to move, they were not, it was their recommendation that they would not be able to operate at that point in time any longer. And with the past incident with the food truck, there's gotta be a more distinct determination on how food trucks are gonna be handled. Besides, it's not part of the regulation. So the commission has determined that that needs to go to the selectman's office under the peddler's license.
So based, based on that thought process, should, let's just say, the hot dog place decide to move three, three doors down? You're saying, if I'm understanding this correctly, would not come under the purview of the part of planning and zoning. Is that accurate?
Exactly. Because it's a temporary structure. It's not, it's not a land use. You know, it's not a permanent structure. So it wouldn't be something that, that our office would handle. So now, whether or not you choose to do an ordinance, talk to Randy and find out what he did for New Milford. That's entirely up to you guys. But planning and zoning has made the determination that it should be coming out of the selectman's office and not coming out of the land use office any longer.
So we can, if, Ed, Chris, this is a good pathway to go. We can certainly come back next month and have Randy. I just saw he, I assume that he also wrote the recent one for North Canaan. So there's a small town and a big town that Randy's written language for. And is this something that the board wants to, to entertain and continue moving forward with?
My question would be if we take control of the ordinance, does that mean the whatever the policy ordinance from the planning and zoning goes away?
We don't have one.
They don't have any.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, so if we take control of it and the hot dog stand decides they want to move two streets up, the Board of Selectmen would say, yes, it's fine or not.
So we would really be taking on writing.
That's what I'm asking.
It's not shifting control anywhere. It's P and Z regulations. So it either remains sort of in limbo where there's no ordinance. Or we go forth and continue to have a conversation or draft language for an ordinance that allows for food trucks and regulates, not regulates, because it's not a regulation, but you know, has oversight over food trucks.
So however, what this introduces, if you will, by planning and zoning saying, no, that does not fall under their jurisdiction, is that somebody can drive a food truck into town right now and what?
Because it's not allowed, right, Donna?
Right.
Because the P and Z regulations are
They don't just, they don't allow them. If they're not listed as an allowable use, then they're not allowed. And it was, it was that was the thinking for the denial of the food truck that was proposed back in, I don't know, July or whatever.
The temporary event that was gonna happen in town.
I'm not clear then. Let me back up, so then I can be clear. Planning and zoning has said that they are not regulating this use. So how can it be outlawed?
Because originally, from the past, it had been something that the selectmen's office did not, they did not want to manage. So it came to planning and zoning. And planning and zoning has had entertained on numerous occasions a change to the regulations and has said, we don't want to be doing this. But it was just always part of our office. And I have made the, the suggestion that it not be part of our office.
But I see what you're saying now, Chris.
If tomorrow I bring a food truck onto my property and give out french fries and hot dogs, who's gonna stop me?
Right. Well, it all depends how you're handling it and whether or not you've gone to Torrenton Area Health, because Torrenton Area Health was the one who shut down the other one. So.
Well, I'm not worried about Torrenton Area Health, because that is outside our entity. I'm talking about who is the one, who is the enforcement officer? And if the planning and zoning presently, which I totally get, is saying, no, we don't want to get involved with it. It's a peddler's license. Then right now, it's, is it outlawed or is it not outlawed?
Right now, it's outlawed.
You can't tell me it's outlawed if you don't wanna, if you're not gonna be the ones who are gonna cover it. I don't believe it.
But at this point in time, you guys have not made a decision to take it on. So.
We don't have the same ordinances. We don't have the same thing that says that you guys say that if it's not in a regulation, it's outlawed.
You can determine that you want to handle this through a peddler's license.
This is the way, the way I understand it, Donna, is planning and zoning is saying it's not our problem, correct? Then end this discussion. Don't talk to me about planning and zoning. And I don't mean that in a negative or mean way. I'm just trying to do it definitively. And if it is now under the Board of Selectmen's, I'm saying to the three of us that somebody could drive in it tomorrow and drive, and sell clams out of a backseat. And we don't have a plan for it. So it's great that we're gonna talk to Randy and talk to him about what we do and plan and how to deal with it. But I think we really need to be clear and think about this because you've got traditional people who have been here a good, long while, fish trucks and hot dog vendors who, who have been you know, part of the community for a very long time. But I think we need to, if we're gonna do something, if they're, if, if, if the assumed practice was under planning and zoning and that is no longer the case, then we do need something sooner than later.
And my guess is that Randy has gone through all of these different
I'm sure.
gyrations. So I will get in touch with him. And we'll come back to it next month or in a special meeting. Sound good?
Yep, thank you, Donna.
You're welcome. Thank you.
2021 Board of Selectmen meeting schedules. Can you believe we're already there? So after a couple of conversations, I'm gonna do a share screen here. We, the board moved to, moved the order selectmen meetings to this Tuesday, 6:30 timeframe. And sorry, I have, there it is. Let me just make this a little bit smaller. And Joyce was nice enough to call up this snazzy spreadsheet that basically shows the attendance. The, the goal was to get to have more of the public attend the meetings. So going across, you see the date of the Board of Selectmen meeting and then the time, the type it was, the number of Board of Selectmen, the number of employees, those present for an agenda item. So whether it was Dan Rosemark coming to update the board on the cell tower or a member of the Conservation Commission coming to talk about the solar project, that's, that would be in that column. Reporters is the journalists from around the region. And then guests is sort of an other category. If they weren't there specifically for an agenda item. So this is sort of how the attendance is bearing out. You can see here, this was Cell Tower. This was, if you can help me recall Joyce, this February meeting, that was, I think, Budget. Another pop in where's that? This one in May where we had an increase, that was the was that another budget? Meeting Joyce, when we went over the, the different pieces and parts. So there, you know, if we were to drill down a little bit further, the, the increases, the waxing and waning of attendance definitely follows, you know, specific topics. But overall, it, there was not, it didn't sort of, changing the time and the date didn't really prove out to improve public attendance. So we want to have a schedule for Joyce to submit to Darlene next month. And we, I think it's. And we, I think it's, I think we need to have a conversation about, is this the right time? Is this six thirty on the second Tuesday? The right time? It does back up to a sewer meeting, which causes a little bit of conflict for Joyce. So I'm just opening it up to conversation for us. Did I lose us? Are you all there?
I'm here. I think we should leave it the way it is for now. I mean, I don't have a problem with the times and the dates that we did. I mean, if you want to move it up earlier, I don't know what you want to do, but I just, I think the two Cs worked good.
Well, given the fact that I don't see us coming out of this, this pandemic issue anytime quickly. I don't, you know, sitting at home rather than at two o'clock in the afternoon in my desk at the office is much preferable to be home.
So what are you saying?
Let's just keep it as it is. It just seems, makes sense to me.
Okay.
So I think the, ultimately, the, the goal was to, at the behest of, of an individual in town that we put this, this meetings at a time when more people can attend after hours after work. It seems to me that that's been somewhat effective, but not, not as, as, as large as that individual might have expected or wanted, but.
Right.
At least we tried.
We definitely tried. It's, you know, been almost a full year. So the consensus is to keep it at the same time?
Yep.
Okay. So that's, so we'll come back to the next meeting, Joyce. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I'll create a list with the dates and, and then you can approve it accordingly.
Okay, great. Thanks. Streetscape. I saw Mike.
Rick's here. We just got a phone call from Mike. He's going to be unable to attend to the personal thing, but
Okay.
He asked me to give you a heads up as what happened at the last meeting. There was a quite a bit of discussion about not extending the sidewalk down to the greenhouse on that section. And the motion was finally made to keep that section in the plans, but making an alternative bid. Because some of the members didn't think it'd be worth the expense to run it to the greenhouse from up at John Gleason's driveway from there down. But it will still be in the bid process, just as an alternative. We also discussed the sidewalks in front of the pfeif and drum. Which the state would prefer to keep that grass area between the walks. We proposed putting another walk in front of the flagstone walkway that's there. But the state wants to keep that open for snow blowing. And what else do we talk about here? I'm look, trying to look at the draft minutes while I'm talking to you. Oh, we had a few updates from Mike Doherty about some other stuff we discussed earlier as far as like the catch basins, the state's okay with us using granite curbing on that and changing them out. There again, there was some discussion about the expense of it, but we made no, no motions on that. So I don't, I think the only thing that we would have to decide with the board tonight is I got some, put out some RFPs. Or, and got some pricing on granite and gravel. And if the boards all right, well, I got, ended up with two prices for granite and three prices for gravel. It's all right to order the stuff that's going to be covered by that grant that's, we may lose in December. If, if you can allow me to order it, then we'll go ahead and do that this week and then Barbara can get the paperwork done and get that submitted. So unfortunately, it's not a whole lot of money, but it's going to be, one price for granite was fifty five thousand and the other one was sixty, sixty six. And the gravel's going to be right around between fifteen and twenty thousand, depending on which supplier, but. So we're only talking right now under a hundred. If I can buy catch basins and stuff like that too, then we'll, we'll count them up and see how many we can get. But I want a final approval from the state DOT before I switch to total granite on those. So. But I'm sure I can throw that, the granite backing in with the, one of the orders that we submit. So. And all the other stuff that we could buy ahead of time that was on the list that we got from Mike Doherty was in incidental stuff. It's, you know, I can, but we can purchase it from any of our normal vendors and it's not that big of an amount, any of them. So. Like snow fencing for protection around trees and stuff like that. It's. So if, if you would like any more information about the beds or just or can we just go with the lowest bidder for the granite and put an order in?
I haven't, I'm going to defer to you all just because I haven't gone through this process as far as RFPs before.
Well, the question I have is if the, the grant isn't, is it, how are we getting funded from this grant? Are we, are we getting, we just have to buy it and then submit it and they'll pay for it? Is that how it works? Or do we have to expend it?
All the paperwork in, and as of right now, that grant's going to expire at the end of December.
Right. So we just got to submit it.
It just, it's a straight submittal. We don't, we don't have to buy it and then, and then submit it, correct?
I believe.
I think we have to buy it.
We have to. Yep.
Oh, it is a reimbursement?
Yep.
Yep. Most of the grants are, yeah.
So, which is, which was what I, what I assumed. So where is this, the funding coming from?
Well, we have, there's still some capital funding and then
What was?
The bond money that.
That was approved for the whole project, the three point.
Yeah, but we didn't get the bond money, did we?
Not yet.
Got out and bonded.
I believe from what Barbara and them have said in the past, we have up to, you know, we can spend stuff and have up to a year to get that bond.
Yeah, I'll with Barbara, not a hundred percent.
Maybe I'm just not seeing it clearly, but I don't, we don't have any money budgeted for it other than what was approved, but we haven't bonded for it. So we don't have the money. So that's where I'm just wondering, and we have to expend money to be able to get the grant. I'm wondering where that money that Rick's going to be, you know, expending.
You're going to apply for it in the, this November, December, and then
Right.
Get it back hopefully before the end of the budget year. But I would assume they, if it's that amount, it would be pretty easy to get back.
No, I'd just like to hear from Barbara as to how the mechanism works.
Let me see if she's able to jump on. We'll have to wait for her to either hop on or get back to us.
Right.
Want to move ahead and come back to this or?
Yeah, I think so.
So the other piece was that south of Main Street.
That was a vote by the board to keep that as a separate bid item when we go out to bid. Until the whole package is done, you're not going out to bid on it. So I don't think you have to vote on that tonight.
Okay.
And I'm sure there's going to be other spots or changes that you want to make before the final bid goes out. So let's do them all at once.
And, and what's the anticipation of, of that final bid going out, Rick? Time wise?
I would think Mike is still on, Mike Doherty from Long and Broom is still on course for getting it out and I believe he said April, late March, April. So we got about the bids back in to start as soon as it was warm enough in the spring to get going.
And we have to have the easements done.
Yeah, that's another thing. We're waiting to hear back from Randy. If you need any more survey or anything for the easements, we hadn't heard back on him, from him yet.
Randy?
Bella.
The attorney?
Yep.
Yeah, because he's putting together the letters for the homeowners.
And.
Most of them are just construction easements, which people are pretty willing to give up. Usually there might be, there's one or two where the elevations are going to change and that would affect her property a little bit. So we'd have to go further into it.
Right.
It would be a permanent change then.
Put her back from Barbara yet.
Okay.
Anything else, Rick, on?
I don't believe so. Not that we need to discuss tonight anyway.
Okay. Do they have another meeting on the books next?
Right now it's scheduled for the twenty second. Next, the week from Thursday, I believe.
Okay.
And, and Rick, you need, so tonight we're looking for, was your committee looking for the green light to go ahead and purchase the stuff or at least to?
Barbara needs time to do all this stuff to get the paperwork in for the grant on time before the expiration date.
Yep.
So if we could get it's, I'm sure I can get the gravel right away, but the granite, there may be some cutting and stuff they would have to do. So that would definitely be a PO for right now. I'm sure they also have stock on the ground. I think it's sent there right away, but whether we can get the complete order before the mid-November, I don't know.
Well, I think, yeah, because I, I don't want us to hold up that process. So what I'm most concerned about is if, if Barbara has, as long as Barbara feels that the mechanism can work, then I'm, I'm happy, but I need to, I'd just like to know. And if we had to come back and do a quick special meeting to let Rick start buying and, and I'm open, I'm open to that.
Okay.
Hello, Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Hi there. Sorry, folks. Got some bad news.
Oh, no.
So Rick, I'm sure has updated you with everything. I'm, I'm not sure, but.
Yep, we're all up to, up to speed at this point.
Yeah, there was just a quick question that we were looking to get from Barbara.
Okay. Mike Doherty, he's not at the meeting tonight, right?
Correct.
No, Mike's not on.
He, he has not heard from the town attorney as far as red ways or where they are with those. I know that goes through the, through you or through the attorneys. That's one of the updates. He's talked, you know, he's, he's working on Route Seven. Other than that, there's really not a whole lot, other than, I guess he hasn't heard a word from the railroad liaison as well. Rick, have you relayed that to?
No, we haven't heard anything on that. So. Another problem with the railroad today. So we're going to be in contact with that guy. So maybe we can
Yeah.
Push him on this while we're on the same call.
Right. So, so other than the purchase available, you know, the purchasing power that you can or can't give Rick, I don't think there's much to update you on anyway. So.
Okay.
Rick, has that area been cleared or?
It's, I'll smooth it up before we get any deliveries, but it's, we cut all the brush and everything over there.
Like I said, if there's anything I can do, I can bring a machine down. I don't, you know, I don't mind spending a couple of hours to help out with that.
All right.
All right. Anyhow, you all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
So I know that Randy did, there was some back and forth between Randy and Mike D, but I can follow up with them to see if, see if there's any holdup or what needs to be done to get those letters to move forward. But you said they're waiting that we're waiting, Randy was waiting to hear from Mike on any further surveys or the other way around?
I didn't know. We hadn't heard whether Randy had any more survey done.
Okay.
So I'm, I think he's got to look at each property and determine if he's got enough information.
Okay. All right. So I, I haven't, nothing from Barbara yet. I know she very busy schedule tonight, so we may not hear from her. So we'll just have to, we'll probably have to have a special meeting to.
No worries. Let's move on.
Swift House. Zan sent me a nice, long email, but Chris, you want to give a?
Yeah, just an update from last time. After you allocated funds, we allocated funds. We have taken down the chimneys and covered up the roof to make sure that no rodents are getting in there. We have the foundation guys have yet to come, but, but the Bob Boone and the environment, the, I forget the name of his biotech group have rid the building of all squirrels at this point. So we feel that we're, it's pretty confident that when we get the foundation on, that should really seal it all up. And then other than that, our next meeting is really now taking the next step and focusing on who can use this building? How can they use this building? How do we deal with recommend ending using this building? And that I anticipate will come sometime early next year when we have a real plan to figure out what, how we want to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. COVID nineteen update. So after the uptick that we had a few weeks ago, it's really for us, it's leveled off. The schools are continuing to do a really good job keeping their, their testing up, keeping the students on campus. The number of cases that we've had since March is twenty-two, but again, it's funky numbers because the most recent case that was reported into us was on September seventeenth. So we've had no new cases come in since then to that, you know, state DPH system. So that was almost a month ago. So it's likely that those people have all recovered. We don't get any follow-up. Like, that's not the way the data works. So that's sort of, it is what it is. We continue to be using the drop boxes, in-person appointments on a, you know, one person, a case by case basis. There's, I'm sure everyone has seen the uptick in cases all over the state. There was a big, big increase into the system over the weekend of like eleven hundred cases. Where, you know, we're heading into, you know, again, testing new waters. I was talking with someone the other day. Thinking about Halloween and moving forward from Halloween because you're going to have a lot of people gathering in places and congregating. And what's that three weeks after Halloween? Two, three weeks after Halloween going to look like, which is, is Thanksgiving. So still really cautious, super cautious. We have a lot of cleaning planned around the election. That's going to be a full day of cleaning. That where I think Joyce, I think confirmed, they're going to probably come in around noon on the day after the election, as long as nothing happens with the election. And it's going to be, it's many, many hours for them to sanitize the building. So we're going to need to be closed the day after the elections because the, the building, you can't have people in working as they're aerosolizing and sanitizing all the rooms in the building. So. We're, you know, just continuing to move forward and deliver services. Seamlessly as we have all along. So social media policy. There were some some staff sent in some edits. I made the edits, but I'm not prepared tonight to to have the board vote on that. I want to get it to you so you can look at it. And then there was just wasn't enough time. So hopefully I'll send that out at some point in the next, by the end of the week, I would think. And then we can either talk about it at a special meeting or be prepared for the next meeting.
Excuse me, Jean. I sent you. I sent you a message in chat.
Oh, so sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Um, because we sent you recommendations, some employees did internally in terms of the employee COVID policy. And I just wanted to know where we are with that.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
By that. Yeah, I did make I made some of those corrections. I. We should have talked about that tonight. I apologize. I'll have to find. I need to find out if Randy wants to see it again because he's been such a big part of this and I'll have to get back to you. I don't see your chat, your message in the chat box.
Oh, maybe I didn't send it properly. Sorry.
It might have gone to one single person instead of everyone or something, but I will follow up on that. With Randy tomorrow.
If if you could make it a priority because it's been, I mean, I don't need to tell you the obvious. It's been seven months. So and we still don't have a firm policy. So if you could, it would be good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Gina, I'm just going to. Emphasize what what Lee is saying. And I've been out of it completely, but. I'm only sensitive to the fact that this was brought up. Last meeting and we all went sort of toe to toe on it. And it seems that we're not getting a real answer as to a policy. And I I don't even care if it's it's written on a back of an envelope. But that some bullet points of how we're going to proceed, because the way I look at this, this thing is not going to happen and and very quickly. And I don't want to sit here every next meeting and next meeting saying, well, we're going to listen and figure out a policy. I think we really need to have some sort of policy or procedure or and and really put out to the public. To understand how to use town hall if we're going to use it at all. And if the decision is we're not going to be able to get in it, then maybe that's the decision. But I'd rather tell people that now. Than to string them along and saying, well, you know, we need to review it a little bit more here and there. Not only do I think the the Board of Selectmen has the obligation not only to the town. People and taxpayers, but we have the obligation obviously to the people who work in it and 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 around it. So. I would strongly urge that whatever you've got from Randy that we put it out. So that Ed and I can look at it and understand what we're dealing with and then weigh in. And I'd like to think to see, and I don't know about you, Ed, but I'd like to see this thing resolved by, you know, in the next two weeks. It shouldn't be that hard. And whatever plan comes with that, whether, as I mentioned last time, the individual departments having their own plan within their own systems. And then working in concert with the balance of what the town hall is or whatever, I think. I just need to. I I'm feeling very uncomfortable. That we're just floating along and I just don't. I don't. I don't want to do that any longer.
Yep. Okay. Um, Main Street noise, traffic. Andrew was off today, so I didn't get to. Connect with him. Chris, you had been you had met with him a couple of times.
Yeah, I mean, in part, it's it's it's. You know, my challenge, because I've been like everybody else out flat out, and I know Andrew has too, but. Clearly. Clearly Kent is an attraction, even when there's not much, there's less to do here. And people are walking around and. The the traffic is not going to go away, if you will. And and I think we really need to have some sort of plan. I've asked Andrew specifically and 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 we have not been able to meet. Since like three months ago. But I will endeavor and push him and ask him to to do that because I think that. We, the selectmen, have to come up with some sort of plan again. That's going to figure out how we're going to deal with with people in traffic in town. Not only the speeding, not only the noisy motorcycles, but just sort of the general hubbub. And it seems like when you talk about the river, when you talk about closing, you know, operating town hall, you talk about the sidewalks, you talk about the traffic. Everything needs a plan, and yet it's really hard to get these things up and off the ground. Where, for the most part, volunteers. And everybody's busy with the jobs in front of them, but. I don't know. I just see a problem. In this situation with the traffic is something's going to come to a head at some point. There were, I think I counted nine little hot rod cars that ripped through town the other day.
Yeah, they actually investigated that because Marvelwood called in a complaint to the truth. Because they came roaring.
Rip it up.
The mountain, and I think they tore up some grass up there. They were able to get a tag number off one of the sports cars and they addressed it with that. It turned out the person lives in Ellington. And they have a very, it's a very loosely organized group. And Andrew showed me they have a Instagram and they basically like post on Instagram like, hey, we're all going to rally up to Kent. Tomorrow morning. And so it's very, it's it's not highly organized. So that's, you know, knowing.
But I think.
Who that group is, I think, is a a good thing.
Yeah, well, I guess my point is that for the nine cars that have a great time doing what they do legally or illegally, I don't, I can't say. It puts all everyone else in town sort of on edge. And I think that's the kind of thing, just something simple like that, Jean, where. Somebody made a complaint. It's been addressed and the police have looked after it is something we have to tell people. It can't just be kept internally. And this is what I talked to Andrew about. You know, we need to tell people what's going on on their streets. What's going on? Because it's it's frustrating if you see it and don't think anything's happening. And the first blame is to blame the police, blame the town. And, you know, so I think we only harm ourselves by not getting the information out there that we're trying to do stuff. And I and as I said, I'll endeavor to to keep. You know, in concert with Andrew to try to put something together. I it's it's not not crystallized in my head yet, but. Something.
Okay, and I got an an email from Ira Smith about. I think it was this past weekend. About that same group of, oh, it was the weekend before, about the same group of cars. So Ira, and I know that you know this, Ira definitely wants to engage in whatever, you know, if there's some. Work group or. You know, effort that that starts to come out of that. I did. One of the magazines that I get. Some GovTech magazine had this really interesting ad for smart. What are they called? They're basically smart garbage cans for public venue, public areas. So this, think of it as, you know, the replacement for the garbage cans that are on Main Street. But these garbage cans have sensor technology that alerts. And this would be through an app. So, you know, Rick could be alerted when the garbage can is full instead of him having to go check it. Or one of his crew having to go check it. It tells you when it's full. It tells you when there's an animal rummaging through it based on the sensor technology. It also. Senses and report gives you reports on CO emissions and noise commit, noise pollution and foot traffic. Which those are, you know, the noise pollution and the foot traffic are two things that have, they're elusive to us. And it, you know, I've been listening for, I don't know, 10 years about how do we figure out what the level of noise pollution is? And how do we figure out what the foot traffic looks like? So, you know, something like this, while it seems very sort of Jetsons, when you think about our quiet little town. Why? Why not explore letting technology help us find solutions? Or at least get the data of what's actually happening instead of, well, I was standing out there the other day for half an hour. And a lot of cars came by or no cars came by. This is actually would be collecting data. So I thought it was very interesting and it's sitting on my desk for to pass off to Streetscape. So I thought that was interesting. Be good on Main Street noise, traffic, everybody? Transfer station job descriptions. So I'm going to share my screen. I can find it. So currently. This is what the the. Transfer station attendant job description looks like.
Attendant or or manager?
Attendant.
Attendant. Okay, thank you.
So at the top here, you'll see transfer station.
Oh, got it. Yeah.
And. I did a little bit of research. They are. They seem very brief and sort of on the trim side of. They sort of lack information. So. Some other, some other towns and the state DAS has. What they call job classifications, which is, you know, a slightly different way, a little bit of a more standardized way of understanding and. Putting the information together for a job description. And so this is the draft I came up with that. Hey. Can I ask you to go on mute?
All right.
So anyway. So this gets, you know, a little bit more, it flushes out what the job. Would look like. And this, you know, this would be for any of the jobs to to start morphing over to more of this style of. Or this model of classification. It just gives more information. It spells out, I ran it by a few people and it it just spells out the jobs a little bit better and a little bit more of a linear format. So. This is the transfer station one. So we're adding in the hourly rate and Barbara agreed that that would be a good thing to add. And, you know, we would obviously commit to making sure that annually with the budget process, these are all updated. So that it reflects the current rate for 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 all the different job. Job descriptions. And, you know, again, I I don't know how much more there is to really talk about. It just. Walks through. How the the job is built in a certain sense.
You scroll down a little bit because I can't see the bottom.
Yeah, let me make it a little bit smaller so you can. Oh, that's too small. So one thing I did add was this, that the candidate would be required to obtain the deep landfill. Operation certification within one year of date of hire.
Yep.
So that just puts us in a better place. You know, having everybody certified.
Is that pretty common for all all municipality waste?
Um, yeah, that's, that's what I, that's what, you know, Jen Heaton recommended. Rather than having folks, you know, either not be. Formally trained or have them formally formally trained, it definitely is an advantage. And the, you know, the, there's so many deep regulations and understanding the general permit. It gives them a framework to live under and it it's a level playing field. Because anybody who works there is working under the regulations, the state regulations.
And how long does that take to get that certificate?
They're moving to a an online format, so. They're going to let us know. We have. I already applied and we I told them that we were going to be having multiple people probably wanting to take the class. So they're not ready to. To hold a Zoom version or an online version yet, but I but they're finishing up the curriculum so that they can do it. They suspended everything back in the beginning of the pandemic. So there's no other option right now. So we're just waiting for them to get their curriculum worked out and then.
Okay. But I'm just kept questioning more about time. Is it a two week program? Is it a two day program? Do you know? How long's it take for one to get this?
I don't think it's a two two week.
One day.
One day. Okay, thank you, Rick.
I just have one question. On the top of it, you list the hourly rate. So does that mean that anybody that comes in there as a brand new person without the special requirement of the DEEP. Certification would start out at the same rate? And if that's not the case, then why don't you put out a minimum, a mid and then a maximum rate? Instead of this is what you're going to be getting as soon as you start. I thought that that was. Something that had been talked about at one point in time. For for all the jobs, not just for this one, but if you're going to be, if you're telling us that all of our job descriptions are going to be in this format. Then I don't think putting the hourly rate or any rate up there. Would be. Beneficial to anybody and that you should, if you're going to put the rate, then you would put min, mid and max. So that you have the freedom to bring somebody in who has the has less experience and doesn't deserve to get. What the person who was in there was getting.
So I'm, you know, the new kid, but. There's no. There's no pathway. We don't have a salary range matrix anywhere on the books. It's the the approved hourly rate is 1783. That was approved by the. In the budget, so I don't know.
Then there's no reason to have it.
That flexibility.
Well, you would either have to create it or you would just I would then you would just take that off. I mean, because I don't, I don't think it's fair in any position, no matter, you know, who it is, mine or or anybody else's. That the person that's going to be coming in and taking over should be making what it took me or anybody else. Their length of service to get to where they are right now. And so I think putting it on there like that is misleading. And I don't think it's really necessary.
Well, we, if if we don't. If we don't. Post a job with an hourly rate where. You know, that sets us up for. Just a problematic. If I if I was someone who was looking for a job and I saw a job posting, but it didn't. Have any any kind of compensation, then I I would. I would sort of question, well, how much is that? What is the average rate or is a salaried or is it? And that would open up the door to conversation and then that would open up the door to. A further conversation of, well, you know, what are what? What is your experience? What? 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 What are you bringing to the job? And then that's how you would start the conversation of of an hourly or salaried rate.
I'm going to jump in. I. I think I I agree with Donna. It's like it's it's not a necessary component to have on an actual job description. You know, if this kicks around for three years and the rate's gone up and it's still 1783, it's 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 silly. Whenever you go for an interview, you get a job description and then somebody says, well, what does it pay? And that's when you hand it to them. And, you know, unless there's a real reason to have a rate on any of these. You know, I I I I think it's, I think we're talking about such a nitty gritty piece. And I don't know if it if it helps significantly. So. But what are we looking to approve these, Jean? What are you? What are you asking?
Yeah, at least this this one for tonight.
For tonight. Okay, so. For tonight. Okay. So, uh, it is safe to.
Put out, I'm sorry for interrupting. So we put a Facebook posting for a job posting for a transfer station attendant for $17.83 an hour. Should I not be doing that?
Well, is that what the rate is?
That's what the hourly rate is. That's approved by the, through the budget. It's not a range. It's a number. It's a finite number. Just as the, you know, any hourly.
Well, that is the budgeted number right, right now. So yes, so that's fine. Yep. Can we just move this along? Cause this is boring me.
So, um, I'm just, I'm looking for a motion if we're ready to, to move this.
And, and do you anticipate, is this a, is this sort of a blueprint for how you see jobs being described at least?
It's going to be a process and that's part of that policy and procedure.
Yep.
Manual process and going through the job descriptions, job classifications every two years. So we would be going, you know, out to the boards and commissions to have them review the, the current ones. And we would be switching to this format. So there would be a little bit of, you know, revision that they would need to do.
Okay. But basically this is the concept and, and we're dealing with the transfer station. So my question is more, we're going to have this for the manager as well?
Yeah.
Okay. And for any other position there. Okay. I'm good.
Ready. I'm going to turn my share off just so I can see everybody. Thanks. Or we, um, do, do we want to make a motion? I'll make the motion to accept the transfer station attendant, um, job description.
A second.
And who is hiring these people again?
So the, um, in the policy manual, the, um,
The hiring committee or something?
No, I believe it's a selectman. The first selectman.
Yeah, it's a little, um, there's some gray area, but for the transfer station attendant, um, that's who the, um, that's who they report to is the first selectman. There isn't, it's not really clear if there is supposed to be a committee. There's been some past practice of committees happening. We need to get some folks hired.
No, that's, that's what, that was just my question.
In the past, it's been my experience that the first selectman puts it out there and then hires, but, but has also had the courtesy of coming to the board of selectmen and saying, this is who I'm hiring. And getting the acknowledgement thereof.
Right. And I want to, um, get some feedback from Jen Heaton Jones on the, the manager job description. Just, she's our subject matter expert. So make sure that we're not missing anything on that. So I'll wait to hear back from her on that. So all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. The organics program, I, um, the, so we have started this Connecticut Coalition of Sustainable Materials Management. It's a very, very large statewide effort that's based from, um, deep and they're moving forward with, um, creating, they've created four work groups and Joyce and I are splitting up. She's taking recycling and what was the other one, Joyce?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, forgive me. But, um, the two that I, um, am participating in are the organics and unit based pricing, which is that pay as you throw model. So this initiative by deep is this massive multi-year initiative that really is going to change the way we, um, dispose of our municipal solid waste and recycle. So we're going to see going away from co-mingle and coming back to the, um, you know, the specific items, glass, plastic. Because the, the co-mingle, the single stream, what's happened is single stream is so contaminated now because people have, um, moved away from making sure that they're doing all the stuff that they need to do from the old days of recycling with a glass bottle and a plastic container. Trying to make it easier for everybody to recycle. But the, um, the markets are pushing back and saying, we don't want your contaminated single stream recycling anymore. So our, um, you know, it's going to be harder for us to create that, um, those reimbursements or the revenue from, from that co-mingle when it's so contaminated. And, um, so all of these four work groups are, are basically going to break out again, the recycling and the municipal solid waste. This unit based pricing is really interesting. There's a couple of cities, Portland, Maine has reduced their total, um, municipal solid waste by something like 60%, some crazy number just by doing this unit pace based pricing where you pay $2 a bag to throw instead of you throw as much as you want. And then you, we hope that everybody recycles. So by removing more of the recycling properly and parsing it out and doing a better job, which is going to cause, um, a lot of re-education and HRA and deep are, they, they're saying all the right stuff that they're going to be investing in this. So doing a ton of re-educating the public. Also organic waste is, I think it makes up 40% of the weight in all municipal solid waste, which is huge. And for anybody out there who composts, you know that once you start composting, you're taking a huge amount of, um, weight of waste out of your municipal solid waste. So that's another, that goes back to this organics program. So we're, we still want to move forward, but because this new initiative is now happening, um, it may, may slow it down a little bit because we're sort of, um, refocusing on this bigger initiative, but still moving forward. Jen and I, Jen Heaton was at the transfer station for two hours on Sunday. Um, and if anybody was there while she was there, she was educating a lot of our, our citizens on what could go into the co-mingle and what can't, right, Rick? So we talked a long time about, um, you know, where in organics, it would really just be like a small, it could be a couple of toders and there were a lot of different places where it could fit on the current footprint for the, for the transfer station. So doable. The, um, we're looking towards, um, piloting the glass program. Again, she was, she said it's completely doable within the footprint of the transfer station. A couple of things that are related to the budget that worry me is, um, that there's no running water at the transfer station. So there's no spigot. There's no running water. And, um, it, it would be a, a big improvement if we could have, you know, something simple as a spigot. Up at the transfer station. So that will continue looking into, and I'll come back to the board with any recommendation on that. Um, we did the cell tower conservation commission solar project is, Connie still on the call? I think I might've lost her. So they, um, Wendy Murphy and, um, the commission have been making huge strides. All of the six, um, recommended desktop locations that were identified, they did, um, onsite assessment. For those, it was the sewer plant, a school, town garage, firehouse, town hall. And one other one that I can't think of right now. Um, but there, at this point, because that all involved, um, engineers and it's going to, it's like the, a very sort of going from that simple, low level assessment. This is a full-on engineers. And it's going to be months before we hear back from them, but we'll likely hear back from them, I think in early spring. And we'll go forward with whatever, um, whatever buildings have successfully come through that assessment. They did talk about when they were at the town hall that it was going to be, um, it, it is possibly going to be more favorable to do some sort of, um, covering like a carport type of scenario over the parking lot. So that's a, you know, a distinct possibility in order to get those panels at the town hall. Cause it, it didn't seem like it was conducive to the, the pitch roof and all the, the different mini roofs that are, um, that make up the town hall. So it's going to be a few months. Policy and procedure manual, just making that slow progress through the job descriptions. And I'm going to draft something up to go out to the boards and commissions in the next week or so to get them sort of, um, thinking about the reviews for theirs. So then we can bring them back and, and take the next step with them. So that's that, uh, report of the selectmen. So, um, for me, I attended 40 meetings last month. Um, I've been just tracking pistol permit interviews. I did three pistol permit interviews last month. So the, the most exciting thing is, um, the, we had our cog meeting last Thursday and, um, we were notified a little bit before that, that, um, we were awarded our TAP grant. And not only were we awarded our TAP grant, but when the feds went through and they were, um, doing sort of, I guess they were reestimating the costs of all the projects. Our, um, cost estimate, I'm sorry, not from the feds, from DOT, it went up over $530,000. So we had originally applied for, um, 1.8, a little bit over 1.8 million. And, um, the, the grant that we're going to be getting from the DOT is going to be a little, is 2.35 million. So, um, I think that's pretty exciting. We have a, a local match that we have to, um, meet and Barbara, from what I spoke with Barbara about, that's, that's part of, um, we knew that from, you know, the get go back when Bruce applied for this grant. So the cog on Thursday, um, endorsed the, the grant. I would like to put out a press release about the grant award in the next, you know, few days, week to let the public know.
What?
Question, Chris?
Yeah, just to, specifically this is designed, is it not for the streetscape or?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, all right. So how does that work with streetscape? Like what is it that, that, how does this all work?
So it's another, um, piece in the Frankenstein puzzle that is these now three grants. So the TAP grant can only be used for new construction. So it would be the, um, and keep me on course here, Rick. Maple Street Extension, right?
Well, I was applying for in the grant was South Main, Maple Street and Lane Street.
Right.
Say that again, Rick. I'm sorry. I didn't hear it.
South Main, Maple Street to Stewart Farms and Lane Street was also included in it.
And that was in addition to what we have, or that those were the only ones specifically called out for it?
They were called out for it because of what Rick Lynn and Bruce thought were, they tried connecting like the South Common Housing to the Templeton Farms. And so they made a continuous loop around that with sidewalks and areas where there weren't any, like going out to Stewart Farms and the north side of Maple Street really doesn't have any town sidewalks. It's got the ones that Jim Preston put in. So it would replace them and then continue all the way to Stewart Farms, the increase in the, what the feds came up with was for the rail crossing. Didn't think we had included enough money to deal with that with the sidewalk. So.
Okay.
Yeah, they had a couple of questions, the DOT did for us before, um, the cog would endorse it. And we answered those questions for them.
All right. But the, the money is, is, is specified for those specific projects, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's specific to the new construction that.
And does new construction mean, I'm just making it up, uh, lamp posts or, or any, uh, any other hardscape like or landscape?
Whatever was stayed in the grant or
Yeah.
Most of it's probably just going to be walk, new walks.
Yeah. I get that.
With everything else.
I get that. I just, it, it seems that it's, it's been my experience that the grant that we applied for that we're operating under now has been kind of fungible. And because if you remember when we first, when we initially got the grant, we had had in there lamp posts and trees. And then all of a sudden we're taking all that out and still getting the grant. So I, I just call into question and, and I would like to see in, in, in writing what specifically these things mean to us. And do we have to be hard and fast to it? I don't know. I.
So Maple Street extension, you're not going to have, there's currently not that much lighting. So you're going to have to add some there, especially going to Stewart Farms.
Right.
And they're spaced pretty far apart on Lane Street. We'd have to look at those to see if that, you would have to add any more lighting there.
Okay.
I think those are further apart than Maine is.
Okay.
We can, um, we can, you know, follow up with more detail. We haven't even had a, you know, like an initial kickoff meeting with the DOT people because it was waiting for this, the cog piece. So we'll probably in the next month have a kickoff meeting with DOT for, um, you know, primarily Barbara to connect with her person that she's going to be in contact with as the, you know, she's the point of contact for all these grants. So we'll, we can certainly get you know, more detail on, is there any flexibility to, to do anything more than what was in Bruce's application?
Okay.
And I would also like to consider, or the board or even the committee considered it. Since this is freeing up bond money, that maybe we go ahead and do Elizabeth Street while we're at it. Get it all done at once instead of trying to come back to it in a couple of years.
Um, I think that's a great suggestion. And maybe even this is where you tag on that piece from Gleason's all the way down to the greenhouse.
I believe that was included.
I'm sorry?
I believe that was included in the original application. So that would be.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay.
So that was pretty exciting news. Um, we've been having, um, so pedestrian safety, um, the signs, the year speed signs have been giving us a lot of trouble. And so I don't have data for you tonight. Rick is hopefully in the next, either this week or next week, going to get the striping completed on those main street crosswalk areas that were identified and permitted by DOT in our encroachment permit. And the, I want to say four or five weeks ago, um, myself, um, Joyce, Darlene, Karen Chase and Sal Loenthal have all been meeting once a week to have, um, an election huddle is what we're calling it. There was a lot of, you know, this is, you know, my first presidential election and there's so many changes and the process has become, um, you know, very complex that I thought it would be a good idea to just have, leading up to the election to make sure that they get the support that they need and any questions we can, you know, get answered on a weekly basis. So those, I've found them hugely useful. And so today we had ours because they're usually on Mondays, um, but we had it today instead. And, um, Darlene actually had a really great idea. We talked about, so there's the 70 foot, um, the 75. The seventy-five foot parameter where you can't do any campaigning. Out beyond the the town hall. And because there's so much going on with the with absentee ballots, with in-person voting being more complex due to the pandemic. There's going to be curbside voting available and we have the ballot box that's available for the absentee ballots. Darlene suggested that we, that the board come up with a joint statement to send out to the public and to the two town committees. As a. Sort of a reminder about the safety and access, accessibility priorities for elections. So I wrote up a draft. I spoke with John Casey and confirmed that he also. Does not allow any campaigning on his property, which is the property that's connected to the town hall property. So I'm going to do a screen share. Just to share this. Here somewhere. It is. So this was the draft that I worked on with Darlene helped make a little bit more sense of it. So the first part is basically from the statutes. It's a priority of the Board of Selectmen to ensure the orderly and safe process of voting for all. The board reminds Kent citizens that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section nine dash two thirty-six campaigning within seventy-five feet of a polling place is prohibited. Such distance will be marked by suitable markers. Anyone who violates this provision removes or damages such markers shall be guilty of a class C misdemeanor. In this unique year, we have the addition of an official voting box outside the, in the parking lot for the safety. And access to all those casting a ballot, please do not park or block access to the box. The Kent Town Hall is the town's official polling place. The building sits within the Kent Green property, which is privately owned. We've been in touch with the property owner and has been mutually agreed that no access will be granted. Election time is an exciting one. Mutual respect is a core value and a vital key in supporting democracy. And the board is confident that the voters of our community will have this core value on their minds on election day. So I would like to said that out in a press release to, we'll send it out in the Constant Contact. We'll hand it off to Lynn and the, all the different journalists in the northwest corner. I don't know if Leila is still on the call. And get it out on our Facebook page and on the website. As long as the board agrees that this is a. What I need to do.
I have one question. Doesn't the, doesn't the town have a right of way into that road and how wide is the right of way from Route seven to the town hall?
I don't know. As far as I know, it's when I called John Casey. And we talked for a few minutes. I think either way, even if we do have a right of way there, I think we still don't want campaigning on it. That's my position.
Well, what I'm saying is if the. If the right of way includes the sidewalk area going in. Do people have the right since it's town property if they wanted to hold a sign there all day? I don't think John Casey would have the authority to say on his. He would have the authority on his private property, but I don't know if. The town could stop someone from holding a sign on the town right of way.
I don't know. I would have to.
You know, they'd be outside the seventy-five feet.
Heck, they could even sell tacos and we wouldn't do, couldn't do anything.
We haven't made a decision on that yet, Chris.
Oh, sorry, that's right, Ed.
Lord, you guys. So how do you like to move forward? Do you want me to?
I think you just blew food. I recommend that I make a motion that we we put the statement out as as written.
Okay, then I'll second it. And is Donna still on the call? Could she answer this question for us?
What's the question?
Ed, you want to ask that question again?
Well, my, my question is the town has a right of way from Route seven down to the town hall. And I was wondering how high, how wide, I'd have to look on the map, see how wide that. Road is because I believe the town maintains that road into the town hall. And if it's grassy area and they're outside the seventy, seventy-five feet perimeter. Don't people have the right if they wanted to stand and hold signs on town right of way? Would they, I think they should have the right to do that.
I know from the pot, there were, there's a bunch of sort of recurring potholes along the boulevard there and that. John Casey repaired them.
It's, it's probably just, I wouldn't even say it's an easement. It's probably just a right to pass and repass. And not necessarily an easement and it probably would only be as wide as the roadway in order to allow people to pass and repass. Anything that's on either side of the roadway. Would belong to John Casey and then he would be the one who would be able to give people the right to do. And what they want to do on his property.
Right, which he's not granting that for. The elections.
So why doesn't he put the statement out? Why are we doing it then?
Because most of it deals with the seventy-five foot.
Right.
As a reminder for the.
Okay, that's fine. Send it out.
All those in favor? Thank you. Sorry. Um, that. I believe is everything that I have. Chris and Ed?
No, nothing to add.
Did you say you were all set, Chris?
I'm all set.
Oh, okay, I'm all set.
Okay, I just heard back from Barbara. Sorry, just saw the text, so. In the, you know, in the name of efficiency, we'll plan to do a special meeting for that granite, if that's okay with you guys, Ed.
Yep. Yep.
Just as long as the townspeople know, we're going to probably lose about four hundred thousand dollars of it or three hundred thousand, which is too bad, but.
Well, I think that. The committee had to sort of figure out, sorry.
I know.
Oh, so I'm just hearing back from Barbara. The resolution appropriates the money. Essentially, we pay upfront and let the board. I'm sorry, let the bond or grant proceeds reimburse.
Right.
So the money is there is appropriated due to the resolution.
Right.
So does that change our confidence level to make a motion tonight? Do we want to still? Push this off?
Oh, I definitely think we should buy the materials tonight. authorize Rick to purchase the. Materials. The. I don't think Rick, I don't know if Rick made that a recommendation of the fifty-five thousand for the granite and the. Twenty thousand dollars for the gravel.
Fifty-five was the lowest, lower of the two bids. We confirm everything was total in it before I would commit to it, but.
Well, were you going to put any more money in or you were going to wait till you got firm prices for like the tree stuff and all that other stuff that we could purchase?
That stuff, I can just go, I mean, they're all going to be, the numbers will be so low that.
Okay.
Our current suppliers and.
That would be my motion, but I'd be more comfortable making the motion a little higher for the granite in case there's a change.
If you just say the low bidder, then if he does, if there isn't a change for, I want to make sure he included the trucking in it. It's delivered here, but.
And you didn't know anything about the catch basins, correct?
I was waiting to hear back from the DOT to make sure that if I ordered the granite pieces that they were going to accept them.
So would it?
Have a special meeting and wait till that point because the granite tops are going to cost more than all this other stuff, right?
The granite would just be a piece of the sidewalk carving.
Okay.
And then you put like the basin tops that they use on Jersey, on the Jersey area barriers.
Yep.
With no back on them.
Right.
Put them in and the granite just goes over it.
Okay, all right. Well, then I would confirm my motion to. Allow Rick to purchase the granite for the low bid of the fifty-five thousand and the gravel. You said fifteen thousand, correct, Rick? Even though you said.
No.
Or twenty.
Do we accept, do we? Is it? And.
The lowest bid was fifteen dollars a ton. Times seven hundred, so I didn't.
Do we just?
Say that number right.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure.
Times seven. Going to be around fifteen thousand.
Right, that's what you said, fifteen thousand. And to then to purchase the fifteen thousand dollars for the gravel for the sidewalk project. That's my motion.
You got that, Joyce?
Yes.
Okay. And so my only question is, is it problematic to put in the specific number if it may? With, because you said something about trucking, Rick. Are we allowed to even say?
Included the trucking. It says delivered to Kemp. I just didn't see a separate number for trucking. I want to make sure it was included.
Okay.
Do you need a number? Just say the low bidder.
Right, that's my question.
Okay. If you want exact numbers to bid on, give me a day or two, I'll have a special meeting and vote on those numbers.
I would, I, if you want me to change my motion, then I would change my motion to be to accept the low bid for the granite and the lowest bid for the gravel.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We know we're not going to go over budget, so.
Right, exactly.
Chris, do you have any questions? You good? We ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody. So there, we had a, Joyce and I had a minor. Miscommunication about the executive session. About that, how it's. That it's on here under transfer station personnel, so we actually. Don't need, there's no need to have a, an executive session regarding transfer station personnel. So we are ready to adjourn.
Rob would like to say something, please, if he could. Hello?
Okay, um, we, okay, we did, we had public comment earlier.
But this is regarding the transfer station.
Okay, so there, we, Joyce and I had a miscommunication on that item. And if it's going to, if it's a personnel matter, we should. Adjourn and and set a special meeting so that we can. Be better prepared.
It doesn't need to go into executive session because he's no longer an employee of the town. So therefore, the FOI doesn't apply for him and he does have something that he would like to say.
Okay.
According to the policy and procedure manual, when I handed in my letter of resignation, I should have been extended the invitation to have a. Exit interview by somebody other than the first selectman that's in the policy and procedure manual. As far as I know, the other selectman never got my letter of resignation until just recently. With the best of my recollection, I also know that another employee who. Has resigned from the transfer station did have an exit interview with Eugene, which is against policy and procedure manual. I took it upon myself to contact Ed Maxon. I explained that I would like to have an interview with somebody other than you, Gene. And I still have not heard back from Ed and I spoke to him last week. I just want to know, I just want you to know, the other selectman to know. I would very much like to have that exit interview.
So when. When, when you came and handed in your resignation, I'm sorry?
At your convenience.
Ed, you're mute, on mute. You're still on mute.
I, no, I'm off now.
Okay.
I, I thought you told me you were going to be away through Columbus Day weekend.
We were.
Oh, okay.
But I had said to you also.
Right.
If you wanted to contact me and talk to me, go ahead and talk to me. I don't have a problem answering the phone when I'm away.
Well, I was expecting to see what we were going to discuss at the meeting tonight and then I was going to get ahold of you.
Understood.
Because it was in executive session, so I was expecting to hear things, so. So if the other two selectmen don't have a problem with me talking to you about. What you would wish to talk to me about, that's perfectly fine and I will get ahold of you this week. Since it is only Tuesday after Columbus Day.
Very good, no worries.
Well, let me, let me, let me just be clear. You're requesting an exit, an exit interview.
Correct.
You resigned from your position, correct?
Correct.
Okay, in the policy and procedure manual, if someone resigns, are they given a? Exit interview?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Jean, do you know?
So in the, the way the manual reads. To resign in good standing, an employee will give the town at least fourteen calendars, calendar days prior notice in writing unless the town. Because of extenuating circumstances agrees to permit a shorter period of notice. That didn't happen. Rob came in my office on, I don't remember what day it was and he handed me a letter, handed me his. And said he resigned effective immediately and I tried to catch him as he turned and left and.
Okay, but, but, so.
So there was no notice.
Okay, but I'm just trying to understand the exit interview component of policy and procedure.
So, so after that piece about giving fourteen days.
Yep.
A written resignation, giving the reasons for leaving shall be furnished by the employee to the department head or for selectmen. The resignation shall be forwarded to the Board of Selectmen with a statement by the department head as to the resigned employee's service performance. And pertinent information concerning the cause for their resignation. There will be an opportunity for an exit interview with a selectman other than the first selectman.
Okay, but we haven't, we didn't get any manager review on that. And how, how does that typically happen if first selectman asks a manager to give a review?
I've never had a review.
No, I'm just talking about this procedures process. Rob?
Reading, reading it, it. It looks like it, that's the department head.
Who at the time would have been John.
Right.
Should have written a recommend, a, some sort of some area precis on what, what, what was that?
Right.
Okay. And it's unclear to me that if somebody resigns immediately or effective immediately and not providing the fourteen days. While it's a person in good standing, is it, it doesn't sound like that would require an exit interview. I just don't, I don't understand why. If you, you know, if the situation is such that it was effective immediately. What, what is the purpose of an exit interview? To be able to say what and why and how this all came about?
Right, from an HR standpoint, I think because the. You know, if an employee separated from municipal service. With no notice, then they become. Private citizens are no longer employed by the municipal government. So it's.
I'm just wondering, is it the fourteen days, the period in time in which one grants an exit interview? It seems to me that's, that's sort of the logical step.
Right.
But I don't know because like it's not clear there whether if somebody says, no, I'm just leaving right now. And, but regardless, I have no problem with, with Ed doing an exit interview. Fine, I just. I think we need to clean up the policy component that says something that if it's, if you resign effective immediately, you're not, you're not, you're not given an exit interview. Because it doesn't give anyone any time to, to get the manager's perspective, to get, you know, everything in place, but.
Right.
Right.
I think in this situation, because it's not written, let's just do it and go from there.
Okay. So it is twenty fifty-five and um I'll move to adjourn unless anybody has anything for the good of the order.
I moved.
Fantastic. Thanks, everybody.
Good night.